All right, it looks as if the time is, is 5:00. I'm looking down the participant list. I'm trying to see if I see Chair Alamo. I'm not seeing him currently unless I'm missing anything. I guess that would lead Vice Chair Jurisma to kind of start everything off. So if any one of you has Joe's cellphone, maybe give him a quick text, see that he's doing all right. But otherwise, I would kind of lead toward the Vice Chair to start off the meeting and run it. And I could put the agenda up. Curtis, does that work for you?
Yeah, that should work for me. I'm one of those people that has Joe's cell, so I'm going to send him a text really quick. And then I'd be more than happy to jump on and take things over. Give me a quick second here, Herb.
Sounds good. I'll pull up the agenda.
Yeah, it might have been overlooked because of the change in time.
Okay, I just sent him a text, so we'll see if he shows up. But Herb, if you're ready, we can kind of jump into it right now and get things going. So we'll call this meeting to order at 5:02. Let's do a roll call of the board members. Faye, do you want to go ahead and handle that?
Trying to unmute myself. Good evening, Directors. Director Odom. Director Maldonado. Director Esquire. Director Espinoza. Director Buck.
Present.
Director Alvarez.
Here.
Director Chiesa.
Here.
Director Alamo, that's Chair Alamo, not here.
He did say that he was going to be on in a couple of minutes, so.
Okay. Vice Chair Jurisma.
Is here.
We have five directors present.
Okay.
Did you say Director Klein?
Oh, no, I missed that. Yeah, Director Klein.
Here.
Okay.
Glad you could make it, Mike.
He was the first one on board.
I'm going to say you're quite welcome because this is my last meeting because I didn't, I didn't get reelected.
Well, that's no good.
Sorry to hear that, Mike.
Hey. Thank you.
All right, we'll go ahead and jump in to item C. The approval of the minutes from our last regular meeting of August 13, 2020. Do any of the directors have any comments or changes to the minutes? Otherwise, I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
I've got a first from Director Klein.
Second, Chiesa.
I've got a second from Director Chiesa. Any additional statements, questions? All in favor?
Hi.
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 You've got to roll.
Any opposition? Okay, motion carries. Item D, public comment period. Interested persons in the audience are welcome to introduce any topic within the agency's jurisdiction. No action may be undertaken on any item not appearing on the posted agenda, except that the board may briefly respond to comments, refer the matter to staff, or request it be placed on a future agenda. If you are making a public comment, just remember to clearly introduce yourself so that Faye can get it in the record and we'll take public comment at this time.
And Vice Chair Jurisma, I'm looking at the participant list here. Not seeing any raised hands or anything of that nature for the record.
Okay. Last call for public comment. Okay, we'll move along to item E, staff updates. Joint Tac update. Michael Cook.
Good evening, Vice Chair Jurisma, members of the board. Since your last board meeting, your technical advisory committee has met four times along with the East Turlock Technical Advisory Committee. On September 10th, we had an update on our grant-related projects, particularly the groundwater recharge assessment tool, the programmatic environmental impact report, and the monitoring wells we hope can store all with grant funds. We also worked on with Todd Groundwater on identifying and developing criteria to define undesirable results for the sustainability criteria required by the SIGMA legislation. And we reviewed a memo that Todd had prepared for that, for that task. We met again on September 24th, where we developed an ad hoc subcommittee of the Tac to work on the groundwater recharge assessment tools. There'd be a number of meetings dealing with the GRAT. And because of the size of the Joint Technical Advisory Committee, we created a subgroup who we could work a little bit more nimbly, but we report back directly to the Tac, who would then report back to this board. And again, the groundwater recharge assessment tool is funded by a PUP 68 grant. And we also continued our discussions on sustainable management criteria, particularly the issue of land subsidence and also water quality. On October 22nd, we received a presentation from Hisham Mattel from Merced Irrigation District on the Merced Sustainability Plan Development Process, along with their findings and lessons learned. And then Todd Engineers provided a status update on the projected water budget analysis. And we started working on a preliminary list of projects and programs we could implement that were included in the plan that would allow for the implementation of a sustainable groundwater basin. And then today, we had our fourth Tac meeting. Since your last board meeting, we got an update on groundwater-dependent ecosystems. And Karen's going to provide that report to you later in the program, so I don't want to steal her thunder. Couple of other things. We had a kickoff meeting on the groundwater recharge assessment tool on September 18th, where the consultant group explained the project to the entire joint Tac. On September 24th, the subcommittee was formed. And our first meeting of that subcommittee was on October 27th. And we're collecting data from our respective agencies to help with that process. It's just the kind of things we're talking about as part of GRAT is looking at new sources of water available for recharge. So stormwater and other types of capture that we can do. So looking for water available for recharge, looking at where the opportunities are for conveying that water, what facilities or exist or could be built to convey. And then where would that water be best recharged? So looking at the best locations in terms of soil type, accessibility, that type of thing. So things like, you know, on-farm recharge or spreading basins, working with cities on stormwater retention ponds. What options do we have to put more water into the sub-basin? And also looking at things like what time of year would be best? You know, winter, if we have stormwater, summer, not so much, but looking at those various seasonal factors. So those are the things, Vice Chair Jurisma, we've been working on as a joint technical advisory committee since your last board meeting. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Very good. Thank you, Michael. Any questions for Mr. Cook on the joint Tac update?
I have a question.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Yes, this is Milt Treewiler, Turlock citizen. Michael Cook, you just ran over a list of items that will be covered by this groundwater recharge assessment tool. You went through them quite quickly. I was kind of interested in them. New sources of groundwater for recharge. There were about four or five items you mentioned. You don't have a list of that, or will a list of that be presented later?
Yeah. Not tonight, Milt, but a list of that stuff will be presented later. So we're looking at things, you know, where could we find water available that we, so far we haven't captured for recharge? So an example is stormwater. You know, during the, during the winter season, it rains. And for all of us, most of the time, rainwater is a nuisance, and we try to get it out of here as quickly as possible, get to the San Martin River and get it out of here. You know, are there options to maybe capture some of that water somehow and move it to locations where we could then recharge it into the aquifer during the winter season or hold it until spring or something like that? So those are the types of things we'll look, we'll be looking at. We've only just really kicked off this program, but we'll be working with a team of consultants to help us develop a robust program to find ways to recharge more water into the aquifer as part of our sustainable management of the basin.
Okay, thank you, Michael. I'll probably have further questions for Valerie.
Thanks for the question, Milt. Any other questions regarding the joint Tac update? Okay, hearing none. I see that Chair Alamo has joined us, so I will turn it over to him. Director Alamo, we are on item E, the second bullet point for inter-basin coordination.
I'll let Michael take that. Thank you, Curtis.
No problem.
Okay, good evening, Chair Alamo. So just a couple of quick things in terms of inter-agency coordination. Those sub-basins, the staff and consultants have been coordinating on the groundwater budget and groundwater model. Luckily, the Turlock Basin and the Minnesota Basin have hired the same consultant team. So we're coordinating in the development of our groundwater model and budget, which is a really good opportunity to make sure we're on the same page. That's been time well spent. And then the other thing we had, we did have a presentation on October 27th from Hisham Mattel from Merced Irrigation District, as I mentioned. So we're trying to learn lessons from the Merced sub-basin, who was two years ahead of us in terms of putting their sustainability plan together. So a little bit of coordination there. Those are the two items I have, Chair Alamo. Any questions?
Questions for Michael? Thanks for the update. We'll move on to our GSP update, Debbie.
No, now, can you hear me? Okay, perfect. Sorry about that. Thank you for the opportunity to, to give you an update on the work that the technical advisory committee has been doing along with our consultant team on the GSP for, for the groundwater sustainability agencies within the sub-basin. The technical advisory committee continues to, to work on a variety of fronts as we continue to push forward in developing some draft materials that, that the GSAs can, can consider for, including into the GSP. We have continued to work since we met last on the initial sustainable management criteria. That, those criteria, I think, as I've shared with you before, are going to evolve as we continue to develop the GSP. And we'll be bringing those drafts to you when, when they're a little further along. We've also done significant work on the, technical work on developing what we call the future baseline scenario. So for the GSP, we're required to evaluate into the future over a 50-year period to see what groundwater conditions will be over that 50-year period without any additional management actions and that sort of thing. And then what you do is then you look and, and evaluate those future conditions against what the sustainable management criteria looks like and, and see if, if, if conditions are sustainable. And if they are not, then you add in through additional modeling scenarios what projects and programs and actions could be implemented to achieve sustainability. And then you do additional modeling. And so that, that first baseline modeling scenario, the, the, we should be receiving initial results and information from the consulting team later this month at the next technical advisory committee meeting. And so we'll be reporting back to this board on the findings of that in a future meeting. But we wanted to let you know that that is coming here in the near future. And so we're pretty excited about that. And then significant work has been done, as, as Michael indicated, and as Karen is going to be talking about on evaluating what groundwater-dependent ecosystems or potential groundwater-dependent ecosystems may be within the sub-basin. So that can be incorporated into the GSP as well. And so Karen is going to give an update on where we are with that. And that's all I had. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Seeing none, we'll move on to public outreach update. Herb.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Alamo. I just have a couple of quick slides here to go. So good evening, Chair, Vice Chair, and other members. This is public outreach update for November 5th. Biggest thing that's going on right now is we're developing a groundwater lunch hour that we're going to have next Friday, Friday the 13th. Oh, my, my slides want to advance on their own. On November 13th. And they, I'm just going to do this because it's going to be a lot easier than the animation doing its own thing. So November 13th, we're going to have a groundwater lunch hour. It's just an open hour where we're going to have members from the ad hoc communications committee on hand to answer questions from stakeholders and be able to field questions, answer them to the best of our ability. If we can, if they're a little too technical, then we end up finding a way to route them to the technical team and the consultants that are working on the GSP. But it's just a way where we decided to kind of have a touch point with, with stakeholders in between meetings and virtual workshops and technical workshops that have been held. So we just want to be able to have that as an option for people. It's very open-ended. It's the first time we're doing this. And we, we intend, if it goes well, to have, have one of these every two, three, four weeks, depending on the number of people or the interest for it. So just a way to get in front of stakeholders, answer their questions, let them know how to be involved, where we're at in the GSP process, where they can provide input, where we're, where we really need input from them, and things like that. And so turlockgroundwater.org, our website, has, the sub-basin website, has all the information there to, to get, you either click. It's a Zoom meeting, so people can click on the link anytime during that hour, that 12:30 to 1:30 hour that we have available, or they could dial in as well. And so if nobody calls in, this is kind of an experiment. If nobody calls in despite the outreach we're doing, then those of us on the ad hoc communications committee will just take it as an opportunity to do a little bit of work and plan for our next event or our next outreach opportunity. So that is that. That's the big thing going on. Groundwater Lunch Hour, November 13th, office hours, essentially. Next, we held since your last, since the August meeting of this, this board, we had September, we had our September 16th virtual, virtual community workshops, the second of a set of two virtual community workshops that we held over the summer and early fall. And the first one was in July. We had about 40 people over two different sessions. You see an image there. And we covered topics like groundwater sustainability. We actually had our DWR representative, who is covering the area, present on groundwater sustainability and the GSP regulations. And then we talked about sustainable management criteria that's being worked up for our GSP currently and ways to stay informed. So it was a good discussion. Our consultants working on some summary notes and finalizing all of those, which we'll post on our website. And the next virtual workshops, if they are indeed virtual, or whether they're virtual or in person, it looks like they'll be virtual at this point in time, will be likely as early as January and could cover something, could cover projects and management actions. It could cover anything. And so we're keeping our eyes or keeping our, our minds open as to what we're going to cover for that. We still have our stakeholder assessment survey. We're asking stakeholders in the sub-basin to, to answer 13 questions. It's open indefinitely. It's going to hopefully inform GSP development, not from necessarily a, a quantitative standpoint, you know, with data and information, you know, related to the technical side of things, but more kind of qualitatively. It'll help inform the development of the GSP that way as well. And so we have that open. We've received 29 responses thus far, and we continue to keep that open. So we're encouraging people to, to do that and take that quick survey. And then this is just an example, the public meetings that have been held. You heard Michael talk, talk about the Tac meetings that have been held, one of which was a special Tac meeting for the GRAT kickoff, the groundwater recharge assessment tool. And you see a screenshot from that. It's a, it's an interesting tool. It's going to be helpful for us. And then, of course, there was the, the September 16th virtual community workshops as well. So we're getting in front of people, and there's opportunities for people to be involved. Perfect segue. We continue to advertise all this stuff on Twitter and Facebook. We continue to post meetings of this, this board as, as well as the technical advisory committee on Turlock Groundwater's YouTube page. And we continue to get out in front of people in that way and, and just getting as much out there as we can to let people know that we're developing a GSP, and we would love their input. As we kind of get closer and closer towards a draft GSP being, being put out sometime next year, we want to make sure that, that people are involved. And so that is my quick report for the night. Happy to entertain any questions or comments.
Thanks for the update, Herb. Seeing none or hearing no comments or questions, we'll move right along to our budget update with Michael Clipper.
Good evening, Directors. For the West Turlock bank account, as of November 1st, we had $89,369.30. We are continuing to collect membership dues from the different, various members. For the basin account, the balance for November 1st was $867,960.13. So far, out of all 17 members of the East and West, we have received checks from nine, and they continue to come in daily. And we're kind of right in the middle of it. Any questions?
Thank you, Michael. Seeing none or hearing none, we'll move on. Groundwater recharge assessment tool agreement. Valerie.
This is Valerie. Can you guys hear me? Definitely. Great. So there are two agreements that I want to talk about. One is in your packet and up for approval in draft form today, and one is not, and I'll just explain it. So I'll start with the one that's in the packet, and that's the non-disclosure and confidentiality agreement. And we talked at the early, right after the rollout of the GRAT, we realized that not only the GSAs, but a lot of the member agencies would be providing a large amount of data to, and information to the GRAT consultants. So we want to make sure we do two things. First, we want to keep that data confidential. And second, we don't want to open ourselves up for data disclosure to a consultant to be subject to a Public Records Act request, if it otherwise would not be. So the draft attached agreement in today's package is a non-disclosure and confidentiality agreement. It basically says that any information that the GSA provides to the consultant team to run the GRAT will be treated as non-disclosure and will be kept confidential by those consultants. I don't anticipate any issues with this. I don't anticipate any changes in the agreement. However, we've not shared it with the GRAT team. We did have a long call with the GRAT team about confidentiality and some of these issues, and they seemed pretty agreeable to it. So I don't anticipate there'll be changes, but the motion that we're requesting today is that you approve the chair to sign the form of the contract that's included in this package. If there are any material changes, we would, of course, bring it back to the board. But before you do that, I do want to talk about one other agreement regarding the GRAT, and that's the license agreement. So the GRAT is this platform that's licensed by Sustainable Conservation. And of course, they need to protect their intellectual property. And when they're letting us use the GRAT and run it for us, so we need to have a licensing agreement, and we're negotiating that with them right now. Some of the issues that have come up are who owns the GRAT data that will be produced. We know that we don't own the GRAT tool, and we don't want to own it. But the data that's produced after we run our specific information through the GRAT tool, we want to make sure we own and can control. So we're talking to Sustainable Conservation about that. And I, again, don't anticipate a huge issue with that. We're kind of tinkering around with language at this point, but we want to make sure that what we are paying for, we own at the end of the day. So with that, I'm happy to take any questions either on the GRAT license, which is not in front of you because it's not final, and we're still working it out. It will come to you for approval after it is final. Or the NDA and confidentiality agreement that is up for you to authorize the chair to sign so long as there are not any material changes. Any questions?
Okay, this is.
I have a question.
Yeah, please.
Go ahead.
Okay, yeah, this is Gil. I just, just want to clarify. So the motion is going to be to authorize the, the chair to sign the non-disclosure agreement, but not the licensing part, correct?
That's exactly right.
Okay, that's good.
Yes, and Valerie, this is Milt Treewiler, and I have a question, actually several questions. Could you give me a specific list of items that you're referring to that will be, that need to be confidential? I mean, exactly what are you talking about? Now, Michael mentioned new sources of groundwater for recharge. Is that something that will be confidential? And what is the list of items that will become confidential with this agreement?
Well, the agreement will cover any data we provide, but that does not necessarily mean that all data we provide is not, not public and not otherwise available under a Public Records Act request. There are some, there's a privatization act. So there are some data that TID or perhaps other GSA members may need to provide the GRAT team about how much specific deliveries are made from a surface water perspective to certain turnouts and potentially specific pumping from specific wells. So there are, we're kind of, some of the members of the GSA are in a tough spot. We have a lot of data, but we can't disclose some of that data because it's protected by privatization rules. And, and so we have to be careful we don't disclose data to a third party and then open an ERA request. And, and then we violated privatization law by, by doing this good program. So it's a little bit of a tangled web we weave, but those are the kind of data that would be confidential.
Okay, well, let's, let's just, I wanted to write down specifically like three things that, that. So you're saying well-pumped information. Is that one of the things that's going to be confidential?
Yeah, everything we provide them will be confidential.
Okay, well, give me examples of what everything is.
Surface water supply data, groundwater extraction data. This, but that's, but I, I think we might be getting a little bit confused. There's, there's two different issues. Under the non-disclosure agreement, we, we are telling this consultant, they don't have the right to disclose any of that. And that's regardless of if it's public information or not. And we're saying, as our consultant, you have to act as kind of an arm of us. And you can't go around publishing this and disclosing it. So that's kind of an overarching umbrella. Now, if your question truly is what is not publicly disclosed out of that, that's a smaller subset of information. And it would be well extraction and specific surface water deliveries by turnout.
Okay, that's interesting. And again, the reason you're protecting this information, repeat that again?
So we don't violate the law.
Now, if this, if SRWA had provided the funding to do what you're doing with this groundwater recharge assessment tool, then this then this would be public information, or would it still be private information?
I don't know. I think you just said SRWA, and it's DWR. So DWR is providing the funding.
Yeah, DWR, sorry. DWR. I meant DWR.
That's all right. So DWR is providing the funding to run the tool, but DWR doesn't oversee and it doesn't mitigate any responsibilities we have to keep private data private.
It's a little bit convoluted.
Well, we're kind of in a rock and a hard place a little bit. We can't disclose certain data because we have a responsibility to customers, some of the GSA members. But at the same time, we want to and are required to draft this GSP that's filled with data. Now, a lot of the data we can provide, and it will be included and disclosed in the GSP. But some of it, we cannot, and it really depends on how closely you can link that data to someone's personal private, I guess that's the best way to say it.
Yeah, I mean, but you're protecting people. Maybe this should be public information. I don't understand the reason why this shouldn't be public information because it's affecting the entire sub-basin. It's not just...
The same, it's the same reason disclose people's social security numbers if you're in the Social Security Office. There is private data, that's private property data. And it just depends on the...
But surface water, surface water is a common, it's in the aquifer. It isn't owned by the person above the pump. I mean, because someone has a larger pump and can pump more water, you know, that should be known because they're taking water away from other people by pumping more water than other people can afford to pump.
Yeah, well, you just said a lot. Some of it I might agree with, but most of it I probably don't. So, you know, you're right, whether it's a water right or surface water right is a property right. And you are correct that there are public resources involved with that. But once you're issued a license, and once you divert the water from a surface water perspective, it's no longer public right. It is diverted water. It's what's called a proprietary right. So, I mean, I'm happy to, and maybe this isn't the best discussion for it. I'm happy to go offline. If you want to email me questions, I can answer them as best as I can. But there's a lot of rules, and it's not just all a public resource as we are quickly learning and as a lot of people are quickly learning in the GSP process.
Okay, well, I will thank you for your comments, and I'll just, you know, stop at that, and maybe I will get ahold of you personally. Thank you.
Sure, and if I can just say one more thing. The agreement that's before the board today is to just make sure that someone isn't disclosing things that they shouldn't. That doesn't mean that if someone did a Public Records Act request, we wouldn't disclose that same information. That's not what we're saying. So if that's confusing here, I just want to be clear that we're just saying, hey, we're giving this to someone else. We want to make sure we're careful that they don't do anything wrong with it. But that doesn't mean if you asked one of the public agencies for information that they would necessarily withhold that information. That makes sense.
Thank you.
Any other questions or thoughts or confusion?
Not out. Entertaining us via motion?
I will move to authorize the board chair to sign the non-disclosure agreement. This is Gil.
Second from Curtis.
Thank you, Gil. And Curtis, it's been properly moved in seconds. Any further discussion or comments? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
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 All right. Same sign, please. I will say that motion's approved, passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Valerie. We'll move on with agenda item number two, the GDE analysis. Karen?
Hi there. This is Karen Morgan. I work with the City of Series, but I had the opportunity to do an internship with Todd Groundwater to analyze the groundwater-dependent ecosystems in the Turlock sub-basin. So this is a summary of what I've been doing. Next slide. So GDEs are part of the requirement to be analyzed with Sigma. The requirements and approach for the GDE evaluation in Turlock is what I'll be discussing tonight. I'll also be going over the definition of GDEs and the importance to Sigma. And then I will go through a lengthy description of the methodology and analysis of potential GDEs. So you can see in the image to the right here, it's a good example of what we're talking about. When groundwater levels reach the surface water, they can impact the root zones of vegetation, and those vegetations specifically depend on groundwater some or all of the time for their survival. And then there's, it creates a habitat where other species, sometimes endangered, only survive in these habitats. So you can see on the bottom right, this one is not connected. So we're trying to find the difference of the ones that are and are not. Next slide. So regulations require the identification of GDEs utilizing data available from the department or best available information. DWR provided maps of potential GDEs in April of 2018 with best available information for the Turlock Basin. NCAG data sets available after the approved GSC work plan, and there was no funding to analyze these maps. There are roughly 2,500 separate polygons to be assessed in the sub-basin. We needed a reasonable approach for preliminary assessment of potential GDEs to eliminate the unlikely GDEs. Next slide. So we developed a multifaceted approach for preliminary assessment of the NCAG vegetation and wetlands. There's a focus on initial elimination of polygons unlikely to be GDEs, and these are areas of consistently deep groundwater considering fluctuations. Use of the Nature Conservancy's online pulse tool to review changes to vegetation health and determine if correlation to precipitation. And looking at artificial or human-sourced water, for example, canal spills, man-made ponds, wastewater treatment plants, and irrigation. So I have volunteered my time. I am the Series Public Works Superintendent, but I did this on my own. As an OSU, working at OSU, I'm working on my graduate for my master's in natural resources. Next slide. So let's talk about some definitions here. What is a GDE? Groundwater-dependent ecosystems are a poorly understood yet vitally important component of natural habitats and biodiversity in California. Groundwater-dependent ecosystems are plant and animal communities that are solely or partially dependent on the availability of groundwater to maintain their structure and function. GDEs are specifically defined under California Sustainable Groundwater Management Act as ecological communities or species that depend on groundwater emerging from aquifers or on groundwater occurring near the ground surface. GDEs provide valuable functions that benefit people, such as purifying water, providing recreational opportunities, climate regulation, pollinators for nearby agricultural fields, and habitat for endangered species. Wetlands are very unique. Wetlands are areas where water covers the soil or is present either at or near the surface of the soil all year or for varying periods of time during the year, including during growing season. Water saturation largely determines how the soil develops and the types of plant and animal communities living in and on the soil. Wetlands may support both aquatic and terrestrial species. The prolonged presence of water creates conditions that favor the growth of specially-adapted plants called hydrophytes and promote the development of wetland characteristics such as hydroic soils. Wetlands receiving water from groundwater tend to stay wet longer throughout the year than those fed on surface water only. However, when groundwater levels are lowered, the connection to the wetland can be lost, causing water to become unavailable, and these valuable natural habitats to be lost. Next slide. Here we have a map of the Turlock sub-basin and the NCAG polygons. DWR worked with 48 publicly-available state and federal data sets at map vegetation, wetlands, springs, and seeps commonly associated with groundwater in California. It was developed through a collaboration between DWR, the Department of Fish and Wildlife, and the Nature Conservancy. So you can see here in red and yellow, the polygons. The, we began with 862 wetland polygons and 2,854 vegetative polygons. It is important to note that the polygons do not necessarily mean that they are GDEs. The vegetation is just commonly associated with areas that can be GDEs. Next slide. So I had five steps of methodology. Number one was to convert the polygon format from NCAG polygons to a more flexible use in Google Earth. Secondly, we removed polygons where the depth to water is greater than 30 feet in two time periods, 1998, which was a very wet year, and 2015, which was a very dry year. We removed polygons so that they align with the sub-basin boundary. And then we used an in-depth assessment of each and every polygon using the Nature Conservancy Pulse Tool, which we'll look at in future slides. Then we removed polygons created by man-made features such as water supplies from applied water, treated wastewater effluent, urban storm water, and irrigated return flows. Next slide. Steps two and three are combined together. You can see that there are many polygons eliminated in the central eastern sub-basin. The polygons where depth to water is greater than 30 feet in both wet and dry years were eliminated. This step is to eliminate polygons that are below the rooting depth of plants, typically found in GDEs. Groundwater-dependent vegetation includes riparian vegetation, wetlands, and purely terrestrial ecosystems like valley oak woodlands. GDE vegetation relies on the availability of groundwater within the rooting depths of the plants. Water uptake can be from within the saturated zone as well as the capillary fringe, which can extend inches to feet above the water table for sandy and more clayey soils respectively. An example of rooting depths is the Quercus de Mosa, which is the valley oak, whose roots can grow to a depth of 25 feet. Also, the Salix Gooding. This is the Gooding's Willow with roots that can reach around seven feet deep. All polygons that have water levels below 30 feet in the wet year of 1998 and the dry years of 2015 were eliminated. The shape files were also clipped to represent polygons within the basins. Steps two and three left 1,268 vegetative polygons and 339 wetland polygons for assessment. Next slide. So this is an example of a small area along the Twalomee River before the elimination process that's described in step one and two began. The orange polygons are vegetation, and red are wetland polygons. You can see the river is really underneath that red line with the wetlands. And just to the north, which is actually to the right, the large area of orange is outside the basin boundary. Next slide. So this map is the same small area that shows the polygons after elimination and of clipping the shape files and removing those with depth to water greater than 30 feet. It's very, very difficult to see the polygons in this slide. I apologize for that. In order for me to do a really good assessment using the Pulse Tool, I needed just the outline of each polygon. If you look really closely at the yellow arrows, you could see some of the polygons that are outlined along the river and the red line going through the river. This was just really important so I could compare apples to apples when looking at the Pulse Tool, which we'll talk about in the next few slides. So we removed 571 vegetation polygons and 238 wetland polygons with this alignment and the depth to water. Next slide. So this is just another look at the polygons that were left. This is on the San Joaquin River, right next to the Jennings, the City of Modesto's Jennings facility. As you can see, the boundary is relatively clear with no polygons showing up on the eastern side of the river and all of the polygons that are left on, I'm sorry, on the western side, none on the western side. And you can see all the polygons on the eastern side. So with this alignment and the depth to water, it left 1,260 vegetation polygons and 399 polygons. Next slide. The Pulse Tool was created by the Nature Conservancy. It was a very useful tool with a significant amount of data. I conducted an in-depth analysis using this Pulse Tool. It's a visual aid for water managers and was used to assess each and every polygon for the likelihood that the vegetation health and vigor correlates with rainfall. Remotely sensed satellite data can provide a cost-effective alternative to routinely monitor GDEs statewide. Remote sensing methods take advantage of different patterns of reflectance related to the level of surface moisture and/or photosynthetic chlorophyll present in vegetation. In the absence of field-based biophysical monitoring data, remotely sensed indices associated with vegetation moisture and chlorophyll can provide an indirect metric of growth and water stress. Both of these variables provide a preliminary proxy to monitor GDE health. Many studies have demonstrated the utility of satellite remote sensing to monitoring metrics of vegetation health and vigor, growth, and mortality using different spectral indices. Free and easily available satellite data from Landsat sensors since 1984 present a tremendous opportunity to evaluate the long-term trends of changes in greenness and moisture contents of GDEs over time. Researchers have also found that remotely sensed vegetation metrics, precipitation, and groundwater levels near GDEs are correlated and help to better understand the impact of groundwater extraction on GDE health. The GDE Pulse Tool provides groundwater managers with critical information to help them better understand the interplay and correlations between GDE vegetation metrics, local precipitation, and groundwater levels. Using the annual drying month metoids, we calculated the normalized derived vegetation index, NDVI, to estimate vegetation greenness, and the normalized derived moisture index, NDMI, to estimate vegetation moisture. These vegetation metrics were selected based on their documented relationship to the presence of photosynthetic chlorophyll or moisture and the ability to provide a proxy for vegetation growth and water stress, which are helpful variables for inferring ecosystem health. Vegetation metrics like NDVI and NDMI can also be used, can also be affected by local precipitation, which are summarized with annual precipitation for each GDE polygon. Next. The Pulse Tool allowed me to look at each polygon and the NDVI, NDMI, which indicates the health and vigor against precipitation. So if you look at the slide here, you can see in the map there is a thin purple line. That's one polygon. And that is why in the Google Earth images that we talked about previously, I needed to have the shape file simply outline the polygon and not fill it in. This way, I could be sure that I wasn't wasting time and looking at polygons that were already eliminated with depth to water because the Pulse Tool doesn't have that data. So this just sped the process up for me. So you can see in the center, NDVI is the dark blue line, NDMI is the light blue line, and precipitation is on the bottom in red. So with these graphs, it produces a trend line. I chose a five-year increment of time, and you can slide this gray bar scale from left to right looking at different times and different levels of precipitation and dryness to find the correlation with precipitation. This is, this shows the qualitative changes in the groups of polygons from 1985 to 2018. The polygon trend lines that indicate a correlation are eliminated. So in this example, it looks very much in line with precipitation as far as the health and vigor of the plant growing and falling when precipitation grows and falls. Next slide. So this is a... So this is another polygon. This is the, the Tooluma River. Both those examples were of the Tooluma River. You can see here the little, small outline of the polygon. And again, the NDVI, NDMI and precipitation, these graphs do not look like they correlate with precipitation. They do rise and fall, just not at the same time as the precipitation, leading me to believe that these are more associated with groundwater. And so these, these changes do not correlate with precipitation, so they remain in the data set. This is an example of a polygon that is a potential GDE. Next slide. So step five was a visual assessment that was done as I went through every single polygon. I made notes on my Excel spreadsheet, whether or not I felt that the polygon was associated with a man-made structure. Some polygons were extremely difficult to decide whether or not they did or did not correlate, so those remained in the data set to be assessed further. Many of the polygons, such as this one here that you see, which is most likely a pond in a dairy farm, were eliminated in previous steps with the depth to water being removed. So if they weren't, then I just made a note. And through this process, I was able to visually remove 16 vegetation polygons and nine wetlands, but there's more. I still have a little bit of work to do here. Next slide. So these are the remaining polygons that are potential GDEs. So after all of this work was done, there's 1,108 currently retained polygons, most along the river boundaries, which are likely dependent on groundwater at least some of the time. And this shows both the vegetation and the wetland in one map. The wetlands are in red and the vegetation is orange. It's somewhat difficult to see, so on the following slides, they're broken apart. Next slide. This slide here is the vegetation. There are 718 polygons that were retained as potential GDEs. Next slide. And this slide is just the wetland polygons and there's 390 that we've identified as potential GDEs. Next slide. So as we work through the process and as I worked with Phyllis and Liz from Todd Groundwater, this is a really good example of an area that was just extremely difficult to assess. When looking at it at first, I really didn't know what I was looking at, but Phyllis knew right away that these are dredgetailings. It's along the Merced River near Snelling. And so are these, or are these not considered GDEs? These are areas that need more work. So using my spreadsheet and, and the identification that some areas needed future work, these sites might be visited and they may be sourced with surface water or they may be sourced with groundwater. They just need more time. So TID may be able to volunteer some biologists who can also come and help do some more work to continue to eliminate or define that it is in fact a GDE. Next slide. So the next step are to complete the initial assessment. Like I mentioned, I still have a little bit of loose ends that I need to tie up. And then all of this work needs to be incorporated into a description of the methods and analysis in the GSP basin setting. That's something that I'll be working on in the future as well with Todd Groundwater. Use retained polygons for assessment of impacts for management actions and projects in the GSP. And then all of the work that I've done is, is going to be handed over for the peer subcontractors who can use it for their peer analysis and kind of just take the baton and run with it. Next slide. That's all I have for you tonight. Sorry it was so long. Is there any questions?
That is extremely complicated.
Yeah.
I think we would need a primer just on this because that is amazing work you've done.
Thank you very much. This is a passion of mine. I absolutely love rivers and the study of water. Groundwater-dependent ecosystems are not studied. They've never been studied. There's very little data available on them. So this kind of work is somewhat the first of its kind. So it's, it's really exciting.
Any other comments or questions for Karen?
Wouldn't even know where to start.
No further ones. Thank you for that report, Karen.
You're welcome. Thank you.
We're going to move on with agenda item number three, adoption of regular scheduled meeting dates for 2021. I would like to ask, like I did last year, we could move the May and the August one to the second Thursday of May and the second Thursday of August and leave the other two where they're at.
I'd be okay with those dates.
Me too. I'm like emotional appropriate.
Just to clarify, it might be May 13th and August 12th, but stick with November 4th and February 4th. Am I correct?
That is correct according to the motion made by Mr. Kaitzen and seconded by Mr. Dresdman.
Perfect, thank you.
Any further comments or questions on adoption of regular scheduled meeting dates? If not, I will ask Fay to call the vote, please.
Okay, the vote to, the May, the May date changed to what date, sir?
The May day will now be on, May 13th and the August date will be the 12th.
Okay. So this is a resolution 2020-05 to accept the dates for the 2021 Westerlock Sub Basin Board Meeting. The dates would be February 4th, May 13th, August the 12th and November 4th of 2021. How about Director Klein?
Yes.
Director Esquire?
Yes.
Espino, Director Buck?
Yes.
Director Alvarez?
Yes.
Vice Chair Gerisma?
Yes.
Secretary Chiesa?
Yes.
And Chair Alamo?
Yes.
With no denials. Motion passed.
Thank you, Fay. Any comments from the board?
Yes. This is Gil. Want to say, hey, it's been a pleasure, guys. Last meeting. See you all at some other place, some other time. Keep up the good work. Thank you. So one of the, one of the few jobs that I enjoyed was being on these boards. Stan Cog, Western, this one, SRWA, those, those have been the fun highlights of the job. So I'm going to miss that part of it. Thank you all. Good working with you.
Thanks, Gil. Appreciate the work you did, bud.
Thanks, Gil.
Thanks, Gil.
Any other comments from the board? Here none, I will announce the meeting adjourned and our next meeting will be February the 4th.